Planning Commission. Did you join Ken in pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ken. Uh, next roll call, please.
Mr. Denio?
Here.
Mr. Sevison is absent. Mr. Gray?
Here.
Mr. Moss?
Here.
Mr. Crabbe?
Here.
Mr. Johnson's absent. Mr. Brentonall's absent.
Okay, reports from the planning director.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's nice to have a forum here this morning. We appreciate your making your way to the meeting here. One of the reasons is because our next meeting, October fourteenth, has been canceled. So, the next planning commission meeting will be on October twenty-eighth. Just to give you an update on some board items that are moving forward. Next Tuesday, the board will be hearing the Bohemia Retail Appeal. This is the project that was approved by your planning commission for the eighteen acre site at, near the corner of Luther and Highway forty-nine. And that will be an afternoon hearing. It will have a one-thirty start time on Tuesday. On October fifth, the board will be hearing the Ranto Del Oro Appeal. That's the residential project that your planning commission approved over in the Granite Bay area. And on October nineteenth, the board will be having a meeting up at Lake Tahoe. And a project that was considered by your commission quite a while ago, the Caldwell Appeal. That was for a general plan amendment and a rezone. It was heard by the board earlier this year. The board gave direction to staff to write conditions of approval for the project, and staff is moving forward. And will be bringing that back for final action. The board's action was very consistent with the recommendation that came from your planning commission. Lastly, wanted to make you aware, it appears that we will have a planning commission hearing up in Lake Tahoe in early December. We'll fill you in more on this as we move forward. We have several items in the Lake Tahoe area. And it will just be more convenient for the residents and the participants to have the meeting up at Lake Tahoe. So, we'll keep you updated as we get closer to that date. And that concludes staff's comments.
Thank you. Next item is public comment. Anybody from the audience have any comments today? Seeing none, let's go to the next item, please. We've got to wait two minutes. Want to waive that two minutes?
Are we timed at ten oh five?
Yes.
During this slight break, if I might, Mr. Finley reminded me that last Tuesday, at the board's meeting on September fourteenth, the board took action to approve a settlement agreement with the petitioners for the Forest Hill Community Plan. It had been litigated for the past year and a half or so. We went through a series of settlement hearings with the petitioners and were able to arrive at a agreeable solution. And the settlement agreement calls for some modifications to programs and policies in the community plan. The settlement agreement also calls for the preparation of a fire evacuation plan study for the Forest Hill Divide area. Were there other provisions, Scott?
Um, yeah, let me just, I'll jump in here, Scott Finley, Deputy County Counsel. I handled this case on behalf of the county here. As Michael said, on September fourteenth, the board did approve a settlement agreement with the petitioners in that case, settling the litigation. And in the settlement, it upheld the community plan and the environmental document in its entirety. What the board agreed to is to consider amendments to the community plan. And those amendments deal with a number of the issues raised by the petitioners in terms of some of their concerns. And it will be considered as amendments to the community plan. So, it will go through a full program of public hearings before the Forest Hill Forum, as well as this commission, before those are committed, considered by the planning, or I'm sorry, by the board of supervisors, within twelve months. Other elements of the settlement include conducting a fire safety study in the Forest Hill area, which the county will conduct. It also will result in some upgrades, if you will, to the county's website where applications are posted. So, there is more information to the public, as well as some Forest Hill-specific issues having to do with support for activities for economic revitalization up there. We did have a public meeting last night with the community to introduce the settlement to the community and let them know what the future steps would be in terms of involving them in the implementation of those amendments. And we're happy to provide any of the planning commission members with a copy of the settlement agreement if you're interested in seeing it. But bottom line is, the board did not adopt any changes to the plan. They simply agreed to consider changes, which will go through a full public review process. And so, I would expect, and Michael correct me here, but I'd expect somewhere in about six months that maybe this commission would be seeing those amendments come before it for review.
Thank you, Scott. Okay, on with the next item, ten oh five, the conditional use permit modification.
George Rosasco.
Okay.
Good morning, gentlemen. My name is George Rosasco, and I'm the supervising planner of the Plaster County Planning Department. I'm sitting in today for Alex Fish, who is normally the planner for the SEMEX project. He's unable to be here today. Before you is a requested modification by SEMEX. They'd like to modify six of their existing conditions, specifically Condition two A, which would allow for an alternative timeframe for the conservation of off-site farmland. Condition sixty-three, which would allow the installation of an electric-powered conveyor belt on a different timeframe than is now required. Condition sixty-four, which would also allow a revised timeframe to convert the water pump that is at the site from diesel to electric to reduce emissions. They're also asking to modify Conditions twenty-nine and eighty-three, to change the timeframes in which they need to install the levees around the Bear River. And Condition eighty-eight would be changed with regard to the timeframe for the, for the project to obtain a stream bed alteration permit from the Fish and Game Department. In addition to those modifications, we have also added three new conditions, ninety-seven, ninety-eight, and ninety-nine. And these conditions are as a direct result of addressing some impacts to an adjoining neighbor, specifically Mr. Allgood. Let me flip here, so I know what we're talking about. As you can see, the Allgood property is on the right of the screen. And the reclamation area that SEMEX has recently reclaimed, not so recently, but in the last few years, is on the left. Specifically, we're requiring that the reclaimed area be recontoured to eliminate any standing water that may be there. It tends to accumulate water during the wet season, and that will be recontoured to fix that. That the berm, which is the long oval piece in red on there, will be recontoured. It has some slumps right now, and it will be recontoured before the wet season this year, and it will be maintained annually. And the third condition that we've added, because there are settling ponds on site, that SEMEX allow the mosquito abatement district on to the site to alleviate mosquito problems that may result from those ponds. It was determined that the modifications to the use permit are all technical and minor in nature, and they fall well within the existing scope of the environmental document prepared for the project. We are recommending approval of the modification, subject to the findings and conditions in your staff report. I don't have anything else. Unless you have any questions?
Questions from the planning commission?
I do.
One, has any delay, or I should say modifications in the timing been asked for before by the SEPMX?
By SEMEX?
Mm-hmm.
None, none that I'm aware of at this time?
The first time?
And so, you understand, I want to make it very clear that the timing, most of the conditions when I refer to the timing talk about doing it right up front before they start expansion. What these do is they allow it to be phased in when they get to a certain amount, which is about half their capacity to put these in, put like the electric pump in and that sort of thing, which will meet the intent of the original environmental impact report.
Any idea on how that timing would actually be as opposed to a percentage, six months, a year?
Don't know. Right now, I believe they're about at twenty thousand tons. The max that they've ever produced, I believe in the staff report, is one point five million tons. The max that they can go to is one point eight million tons. Most of these things are slated to kick on at seven hundred and fifty thousand tons. We thought that was a better way to do it than a timing with regard to installation. Because when you get to that point of seven hundred and fifty thousand tons, that's when those things need to be put into place to actually implement the mitigations.
So, you're saying that if they're using diesel now and they're supposed to go to electric, that the, shall we call it pollution from the diesel won't make any difference until they're at seven hundred thousand?
That, that's-
Is that how you're figuring?
Yeah, that's, that's what was determined as part of the environmental document that was subsequently done for the EIR.
Okay, and one last question, or one more question?
Yeah, yeah.
You've got three additional conditions-
Yes.
-which are separate, actually, than the modification-
Yeah, they are separate. Yeah, and SEMEX actually agreed to those conditions in the hopes of alleviating Mr. Allgood's concerns, which is right next to the reclaimed area. If you'd like to see the reclaimed area that we're talking about, I have some, let's see, there at the end. This is what it was when SEMEX acquired the property. This is the pit that we're talking, that's next to Mr. Allgood's residence. So, that's before. This is also another before shot. This is after, and I think there's one more after. That's also a before. So, this is before. This is what it was before it was reclaimed. This is, this is after. And that's the berm that we're referring to, where the red arrow is. Anything else?
Thank you. Any other questions from the commission staff at this time? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We have the applicant.
Good morning. My name is Braden Chadwick. I'm a licensed attorney at Downey Brand, representing SEMEX. I think George has done a great job of kind of explaining things. It's fairly self-explanatory with the, with the staff report. But I'm mainly here to answer any questions for, that the commission might have. Essentially, what occasions these modifications to conditions of approval, as George mentioned, the California Environmental Quality Act baseline for this project, it was, was determined by the county to be one point five million tons. Due to the precipitous drop of the housing market and the infrastructure market, the demand has also gone down based on, basically the recession that we're currently in. As George mentioned, these conditions of approval were slated to be done prior to entering into the expansion phases of the project to enable SEMEX to maintain the site, to enable SEMEX to pay for these conditions, essentially is what occasions these modification requests, is allowing SEMEX to get the money in the door based on when that demand picks up again, to then pay for these conditions and get them in place long before the baseline is reached. So, again, the baseline was one point five million tons a year. These conditions kick in at only seven hundred and fifty thousand tons, so basically, half of what the previous baseline was. So, again, the conditions are, as George mentioned, they're minor, they're technical changes. The effect timing is all. SEMEX will, will of course, complete all of these conditions of approval once the economy picks back up and they're able to, to implement them. But short of that, I'm here to answer any questions that the commission might have.
Any questions from the commission of the applicant? Hearing none, thank you.
Okay, I'm also available if any of that do arise later on, after public comment as well. Thank you very much.
Anyone from the audience care to comment on this project?
Jerry Allgood is my resident. And the problem that I have is that the supervisors had ruled that they were to build this berm back like it was before they tore it down. And over a long period of time, just before they got their last permit, they went out there and put up a partial berm. And then, we agreed that they could leave it that way because they just piled it up, just loose dirt. And they wanted to leave it one year and then bring it back to size and be sure that it was working. Well, in the meantime, they shut down, and the year has gone past. And I would like to see it put back like it was. Now, before they tore the berm down, you could drive vehicles down the top of it, and it was eighteen foot high. And at this point, it just comes up to a point, and of course, in the last rain, some of it sloughed off. But it needs to be back with a top on it, at least five or six feet wide, so that it can be vegetated and, and hold it in place. And the, the height needs to come back because it's a sound berm. And it's, it's at the right height up at the top end. But from my house to the plant, it just slopes back down, and that's where all the noise comes from. And I feel like that they should, we should have a time schedule that they put that back because the year is, is long behind us. And if they're going to start operating again, then that should come first.
Thank you, sir. Any questions of the applicant by the commission?
Jerry, they've got a condition in there that they're gonna, before this next winter, gonna go in and repair it and bring it back up to whatever standard. Have they shown you any plans? I know, I guess Paul Thompson was working with them. And you, or have you been in on those discussions?
Not, I've been in discussions with Paul, but not with SEMEX. Now, the problem is that they, they tore it down, and they were in a hurry to get their permit, and so, they just piled dirt up there. And it, it's not much of a berm now. And the year has already passed, and we need some measurements on it. It should be at least eighteen feet high all the way through. And, and it should be at least five or six wide on it. It was, it was about fifteen because we could drive vehicles on it before. And it, they definitely need to vegetate it so we can forget about it. Once it's, once it's the proper size and vegetation on it, then there should not be any further problems.
Okay, thank you.
One other question. Do any of the other modifications of conditions affect you in a negative way? Or if they do this berm the way you're talking about, that would be-
Well, at the same time, were the big hole? Excuse me.
Got some water or something?
I have a question for George, while we wait.
Okay, go ahead, George.
The condition relating to the maintenance of the berm, is that written out already, or do we just know?
Yeah, it's conditioned, the maintenance of the berm is ninety-eight. So, we've already added the three conditions with regard to mosquito abatement, berm, and recontouring the reclamation area.
And this happens now, not at the seven hundred and fifty level?
This happens now.
Yeah.
And, and that condition specs the height of the berm and-
Yeah, does it address that?
Do we have something that, that-
Okay, well, here's my understanding about the berm. The berm was never conditioned. That's my understanding from Paul Thompson and Alex Fish, that they went out on site and agreed with Mr. Allgood that they would install a berm. Now, there was never a grading plan or improvement plans put into place. But Paul Thompson, I know, has been on this property two or three times with Mr. Allgood personally. There's emails sent to Mr. Allgood that, and, and from Paul and Mr. Allgood that talk about, this is what we're gonna do. There was agreement at that time. And, and yes, it has sloughed off a little bit, and yes, they do need to fix it. But, but my understanding is what's there is, is there, and that there's no requirement for a taller berm or anything of that nature. The only condition pertaining to the berm is the one they're adding today.
Okay, and, and the wording of it, is it specific enough in what we are envisioning the berm to be to, to take care of Mr. Allgood's concerns that, I mean, is-
I mean-
Is it generic that just says fix the berm and maintain it, or do we have something that-
I think what you see is what, I, I think what you see is what you get. That's what was agreed to, that's what was put up, and that's what will be maintained. I think Mr. Allgood's point is that he would like a bigger, taller, wider berm, slightly taller and wider.
And some vegetation on it?
And some vegetation. Whether you choose to do that or not is completely up to you. Because at this point, what we're gonna do is we're gonna go back out, and we're gonna look at the berm, and we're gonna look at where it's slumped. And we're gonna say fix it, you know, vegetate it, and then we'll be back next year, and the next year, and the next year. So, the berm should be maintained annually.
But there's nothing to say how the, how the berm's supposed to look originally?
According to Alex and Paul, when I quizzed them on this before I came, because I was very nervous about the whole berm issue, there is, there is no condition of approval that required a berm. As far as I know, it's, it's not in the reclamation plan. I believe at the time, this reclamation was supposed to be done by Patterson Sand and Gravel, is my understanding. SEMEX inherited it, and they took on as part of their new ownership to reclaim this when it should have been reclaimed first. And during that reclamation process, I believe that they, for whatever reason, agreed to berm, to berm this.
Well, there was a berm, and then it was removed?
Apparently, there was a berm by SEMEX. It might have been as a result of the mining. Might have just been a spoils pile or something. That I don't know.
Well, I, I guess my question, George, is, you, you know, being on, on site, what's, say, the highest point right now?
After talking to Paul and Alex, I think it's somewhere between fourteen and sixteen, depending. About the highest, about the highest point, I believe, is about sixteen.
Okay, well, maybe you could call up SEMEX representative.
Did you have something else to say, Mr. Allgood? Thank you, sir.
Maybe I can shed some light on this, too. Again, as a, as neighbor SEMEX has, has agreed, and George is entirely correct, that SEMEX has agreed to construct the berm to begin with and has done so. And the county recognizes that that agreement has been fulfilled and that the berm was constructed as designed and as agreed upon with both the county and with Mr. Allgood. The berm is, is SEMEX's. And to, to, I guess, stick a requirement on there that there be a road on top of it or that it reach even higher than was originally agreed, I think, kind of goes back on the deal that was brokered with the planning department and with Mr. Allgood. SEMEX, again, has agreed to these three conditions of approval, two of which are very specific as to this berm, to make sure it has a consistent height, to revegetate it as requested by Mr. Allgood, and to maintain it on a yearly basis. And, and again, I think what's, what's important to note is that, is that these conditions of approval were not made necessary by any environmental concerns. Again, Mr. Allgood moved here to his current site after, I mean, long after the, the mine had been there for, mine's been there since nineteen fifty-six. And that SEMEX has agreed to be, again, to be a good neighbor, to, to create the berm, to maintain the berm, to revegetate the berm, and on a yearly basis, repair it if it needs it. And that's what these, these last three conditions of approval, at least the two conditions, two of the three last conditions of approval, address those issues specifically. And so, I think as far as the planning department's concerned, and of course, they, they can speak for themselves, but as far as SEMEX is concerned, this takes care of any concerns that Mr. Allgood might have and fulfills any agreements that have been in the past and currently made between SEMEX, the county, and Mr. Allgood.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Any other questions from the commission?
Yeah, I do. You say that this arrangement right now was, excuse me, done as, through an agreement with Mr. Allgood, that this was sufficient, what you've done?
The, the initial-
You said you made an agreement with the county and with Mr. Allgood that putting this in the way it is is sufficient for Mr. Allgood's consent. You said that it's a way to that.
Yes, as far as, as far as the berm height and, and placing the berm where it is and the general design of the berm and the purpose of the berm, that was the substance of the agreement and communications between the county, SEMEX, and Mr. Allgood. As George mentioned, the county's in constant contact with Mr. Allgood. I know in the last month or so that Paul Thompson, as well as Alex Fish in the planning department, have been out there twice at least speaking with Mr. Allgood and SEMEX. When there is work out there and they are on site, also interfaces with Mr. Allgood. Again, at the moment, there's, there's, there's no one out there at the moment. And they're, they're sporadically based on, you know, what orders come in and how much, how much material they can sell off the site. But when they are there, they interface with Mr. Allgood to make sure that, that he's taken care of as well. So, so yeah, so basically, the berm, as you see it here, and as further modified by the conditions that are proposed and that were proposed by the planning to take care of Mr. Allgood and his concerns, again, SEMEX has, has held up its end of the deal.
Well, when, when I'm looking at it, I see sort of a peak, and then it, it looks fairly uniform. Then it starts rolling down, and then it looks like it really slumps down at the end on the left-hand side of the picture. So, you're gonna, you're gonna pull that back up so it's sort of uniform height all the way over, compact it down good, vegetate it, at the higher, at that higher peak?
Yes, that's, that's the, that's what the conditions are specifically aimed at, is making sure that the, the slumping, I think this is the term there in the, in the staff report in the condition, is taken care of and is maintained on a yearly basis to make sure that, that that doesn't happen, and if it does, to repair it. And, and again, on a go-forward basis, immediately, SEMEX has agreed to go and take care of that and revegetate it and continue the revegetation efforts if they're needed on a year, on a go-forward basis to make sure that that berm is taken care of.
Okay. Let the record show that the applicant, Mr. Allgood, was here. And you have nothing further to say either the applicant or Mr. Allgood then? Okay, sir, thank you. Commission, what's your pleasure?
A question for George. A gentleman was referring to the fact that these three conditions state pretty categorically how this berm's to be shaped. Could you tell me the height that's given in the category that says there?
Well, you know, the, the issue, I wouldn't say that there is a specific height. I can tell you that what was, what was, the county was never, this was never a condition by the county. We got involved brokering the deal. What we agreed to was, when Paul Thompson went out there, he agreed to the berm that you see minus the slumping. That was agreed to. Mr. Allgood seemed to be, I'm happy with that at the time. There is, there, there are no plans specifically that show the height of the berm or-
So, our statements now will say that the existing height would be what they're going to use?
Right.
I, I might be able to help here, too. When the berm was initially constructed, Paul Thompson went out there with SEMEX and actually stood on, on the, the actual berm and asked Mr. Allgood, is this, is this good enough? Is this the height you want? Is this what, is this good enough for your, for your needs? And the answer was yes. And so, I think as far as, after it was constructed, the county, Mr. Allgood and SEMEX went out to the, actually out to this site, stood on the berm and said, yes, this is good enough for all parties concerned, including Mr. Allgood.
Mr. Chadwick, do we know what the height of the berm is in relationship to the finished floor elevation of the Allgood residence?
You know, I'm, I don't know the exact height of, of the berm, and I'm not, I'm, I'm looking for help over here. I'm not sure anyone, I'm not sure that we know.
Mr. Chair, what I, what I might recommend is to add some language on to Condition ninety-eight to provide some clarification for the issues that were raised here. And with the commission's permission, I would add on to the end of Condition ninety-eight, the berm shall be maintained at a minimum height of fifteen feet above the finished floor elevation of the Allgood residence. And the berm shall be inspected by staff annually on or before July first of each year to determine the condition of the berm and to identify any improvements that may be required to assure the berm is maintained in a manner consistent with these- to assure the berm is maintained in a manner consistent with these conditions of approval. Should staff identify needed improvements or corrections to the structural integrity of the berm, said improvements shall be implemented prior to September 30th of each year, subject to the review and approval of staff. With that language, we would have an identified height of the berm, and Mr. Allgood can be assured that each year, by a specific date, it will be inspected and repaired if needed.
Is that okay with you, Mr. Allgood?
Well, I'd like to make a correction.
Would you want to come up to the mic, please, sir?
I don't know where the 15 feet came from. It was, after it had been there for a period of time, it was 18 feet high and wide enough to drive on. That I don't worry about. But the 18 feet, Paul Thompson helped me measure it back several years ago when we started all this. And it is 18 feet out at the peak, but it slopes back down, and it comes up, there's no width to it, so it will not last unless it's.
Well, I guess my question, Mr. Allgood, if you look at that picture and you see where the tall trees are, you know, just about the middle of it, because that's where it looks like it's at the highest point right there, that, you know, it looks fairly uniform there, and then it starts going, going down at the last tall tree, down to the red arrow, and then it just gets lower and lower. So if it was uniform across there, just the way it is?
If it's 18-foot?
Well, whatever that height is there, because I'm assuming that that would be the top.
That is peak, and that's where we measured it.
Okay, so as long as it's what's there, uniform at the highest point?
Right, for the highest point, if it's, which is 18, well, it would be fine. And I'm not asking to have it rolled down. I want five or six feet so it, the vegetation will hold everything in place.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
At this, are you?
Just for the commissions.
I want to close the?
Oh, I was just gonna say, Semex, I went and spoke to my client very quickly, and Semex agrees with the proposed language that was proposed by Michael.
Okay. Let's close the public hearing at this time. Turn it over to staff, I mean, commission?
Oh, okay, I do have one more question on that, Michael, because you said floor level, you know, 15 feet.
Correct. It's an existing single-story residence, so what we're trying to do is be sure that there's no line of side issues. And that's why the height of 15 feet was identified as an appropriate height.
Yeah.
That good?
Yeah, no, I mean, that's, I think that's.
Okay, then do we have a motion from commissioner?
Okay, well, with that, I would move that we approve the conditional use permit modification subject to the following findings and attached modified conditions, the sequoet conditions, conditional use permit, and also the conditions of approval as modified today.
And that's at 15 feet?
Yeah.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close. Questions carried, thank you. Onward to the next item, which is temporary condition use permit, Cisco Grove Material Oh, we just saw that.
Shall I get started? Thank you, good morning. The applicant is requesting approval of a conditional use permit to allow for a temporary materials processing plant in the Cisco Grove area. The applicants will utilize the materials plant to process concrete taken from Interstate 80, and will recycle it to pave approximately nine miles of the interstate as part of the Interstate 80 resurfacing project. The subject parcel is owned residential forestry, forestry and highway services. The site fronts the south side of Interstate 80 and the west side of Cisco, Cisco Road, west of the Cisco Road overpass, and north of Union Pacific Railroad. Site is currently developed with a service station, seasonal recreation area, and a graded area that will serve as the project site. The project involves a resurfacing of the nine-mile highway segment between the Immigrant Gap Interstate 80 interchange and the Rainbow Road Interstate 80 interchange. The applicants propose to install the temporary material processing plant on a two-acre portion of a 93.5-acre parcel. The material processing plant is portable, and it includes all the materials required for the processing of concrete. The plant will consist of an aggregate materials delivery and storage area, materials processing plant, excavator, conveyor, temporary parking, and storage areas for construction equipment. And additionally, there will be a street sweeper and water truck on site for site maintenance. The surface improvement operations include removing aggregate materials from Interstate 80 and transporting them to the materials site, where they will be stored and stockpiled on the site until they can be processed. At the time, after they're processed, the materials will be hauled back to Interstate 80 and used for the resurfacing. The plant will be operated as necessary to produce concrete for the project. The operating schedule is proposed for three construction seasons, approximately 110 days per year, seven days a week from 6:00 p.m. until 10:00 p.m. Maximum of four employees will be working on the site at one time. And because the proposed use is allowed on a temporary basis for this type of zoning, the applicant will have to come back in a year for an extension of time. And with that, I would like to recommend approval and answer any questions you may have.
Any questions of staff?
I have one. Could you go back to the original site? Just a question.
The first slide?
Yeah, more like that. Operations until tenant night on a weeknight, I mean, a weekend. How far is it from those houses on the right to that plant?
The houses over this way? I can't tell you the exact distance, but it is a pretty good distance, and then there's the freeway going back and forth. And just to clarify, it's from 10:00 p.m. until 6:00 a.m. That's the hours that they'll be operating. So it'll be at nighttime operation.
Any other questions, commissioners?
Just one last one on the containment, that section right there, the river flows right through there, is that correct? South Fork to Yuba River flows within, what, 100 feet of there?
Yeah, here's the river here. And I think it remains on this side. It doesn't come through this area, which is where they're gonna be operating.
But the water goes through big culverts from that site, under the freeway, into the river, as I understand it?
I'm not aware of that. The only thing I'm aware of is that there's a very small area right here that is a possible wetland area, but it's being mitigated for, through protection.
Other questions by the commission? Okay, thank you. Applicant? Anybody representing the applicant here care to speak to the commission?
Yeah.
That'll be noted, no comments.
Yeah, I have a question for him, whether he wants to talk or not. Concerning the water flow from that site to the river, she says she doesn't know about any culverts. Are there any that you know of?
I know, no, I don't see any culverts.
In that area? Okay.
Any other questions of the applicant? Hearing none, we'll close the hearing. Anybody else in the audience care to speak? We close the meeting, I mean, the hearing. Motion from the commission?
Okay, well, I'll go ahead and make a motion that we approve the temporary conditional use permit for the Cisco Grove Materials Processing Project based upon the findings contained in the staff report and subject to the attached recommendation, recommended conditions of approval, the sequoet findings, and conditional use permit findings. Have a second?
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion's carried. That concludes the business part of the hearing this morning. I'd like to give the commissioners an opportunity to say anything if, that they may have forgotten.
I have one thing I'd like to address to the gentleman, it's just from Granite or Tiger. That area is used in the winter as a winter recreation for lots of people sledding. Do you have anything going on to crack with that, winter usage? Do you have anything at all that you put up barriers or anything like that to keep garbage from being used? It's been a problem in the past, and the sheriff's department's been called out there before for hundreds of people showing up on that site.
From what I understand?
You better come up to the mic to speak, please, and identify yourself. Thank you.
My name's Adam Craig with Tiger Construction. From what I witnessed over last year going up and down the hill, a lot of that winter usage was from a large pile aggregate base that Granite had left there from a previous project, because they had a processing site here in 2009. And you used to see a lot of people climbing up to the top of the snow-covered aggregate base pile and sledding down it. There is a small hill adjacent to the gas station there that some people are sledding on. And since we've, you know, resided at this site, we'll be going into our first winter here, we'll, we're definitely open to suggestions of ways to mitigate, you know, people trashing the place and whatnot. Because I know trash is a pretty big issue.
It is.
The gas station owners, they're, I won't comment on them, but there's a good amount of trash around the site.
What do you, you do temporary fencing, you know?
No, no, no. We hadn't, I mean, we walk away from it, and it gets covered in snow, you know?
So, yeah, so that was the only concern I had. You wrote, as far as you know, you leaving any of those piles like Granite did, maybe attract more sledders?
Our goal is to not leave any piles there. We still have probably about a month or so until snow starts flying, and we have to make those decisions. But, I mean, as of right now, we're, yeah, we're still unsure whether or not we'll have a pile left there.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. That concludes the meeting of September 23rd of the County Planning Commission.
And just as a reminder, the October 14th meeting will be canceled. Your next meeting will be on October 28th.
Got it. Let's go home.